I did campaign against high-density development to me. I know some people say, well, no, it's not. You guys are wrong. Well, to me, after everything I've seen, done, all the research I've done, to me, this seems like it's too dense of a project for that area. I do want to thank staff. We've had, I don't even know how many meetings we've had about this. I've met with the developers, thanked them for their time. I've met with the appellants, thanked them for their time. Everybody's trying to work together to find a solution. But personally, I believe this project is way too big for that piece of land. Councilmember Strickland.
So first, for any of you that have suggested that if I vote for this project, I'm going back on my campaign promise against high-rise, high-density development. I believe nothing could be further from the truth. I'm against high-rise, high-density apartments, especially mandates from the state of California. This proposed project is a least-intensive use by a lot. In fact, the existing use today produces about double the amount of traffic than this proposed hospital. This is not that. I'm against high-density because increased parking problems. In this proposal, the average parking ratio is .56 per unit. That is 35% more parking than Merrill Gardens, and Merrill Gardens senior facility has independent living. Less than 10% of assisted-living patients own cars. None of the memory care patients own cars. That means less than 20 residents will bring cars to this hospital. That leaves 70-plus parking spaces for employees. Therefore, at any given time, there's more than enough parking at this facility. This is not that. High-density creates public safety and crime problems to the city. This is not that. Let's talk about the project, what it is and what it's not. The project is not a residential or apartment living space. If it was, this would be easy no vote for me. This project will lead in any independent living at this facility. This is assisted living and memory care facility, a facility that's needed in Huntington Beach. Our senior population is growing rapidly, and as a city, if you look at our senior population, we have over 60,000 seniors, 30% of our population. The average age of that population is 80 years old. The project, it found that substantial evidence to support a zoning variance allows increased FAR floor area ratio because special requirements of elderly care facilities make it almost impossible to build them under regular zoning laws. The applicant has requested a less-than-10% variance on the floor area ratio plan from existing code. This project also helps with our economy for our city. This project's total value estimated at $8 million in revenue for the city, all while filling the needs of our seniors and our senior population in our city. Lastly, for those who say the operator will in a few years change this from assisted living and memory care hospital to an apartment residential complex, I will move a substitute motion that we deed restrict this property, that draft an additional condition of approval for the CUP that requires that a covenant be recorded on the property restricting the use to assisted living and memory care. The covenant runs with the land, so therefore, in perpetuity, this can only be a memory care and assisted living hospital, not a residential facility. So with that, and by the way, if you look up the definition of hospital, this proposal fits the definition of a hospital. So with that, I do a substitute motion to pass a staff recommendation along with the deed restriction.
Can you please explain just how it fits the definition of a hospital?
I Googled what a hospital was, and I can, I could look it up. But if you, if anybody up here looks at the definition of a hospital, these are patients coming in, and these are patients that are at this facility. Again, it got rid of all the independent living, and it's nothing but assisted living and memory care. In fact, my first job was working at a nursing home. I've worked over five, six years at a nursing home, and that's what this is. And they used to call it Nursing Home Hospital, but I do believe one of the proponents of this says, well, a lot of seniors don't like the term "hospital," so they call it a residence. But it acts like a duck. It's a duck. It's a hospital. And at the end of the day, these are patients who, again, I think is needed. This is a much-needed facility. Be very easy if this was a residential facility like that's been described. I'd be a hard no vote. This is not a residential facility. This is a hospital.
I just haven't heard any of the develop, anybody associated with the developers use the word "patient" in any way. It just, and there's, I haven't heard them say there's going to be any doctors at the location. I haven't heard them say any nursing staff, really, or I haven't heard any medical facility-type issues, and that's what I need to associate with the hospital. And that's why I'm like, how's this?
Well, can I bring the, can I bring the proposal, the person who proposed this project to come down?
And I'll second that motion, by the way.
Councilman Burns does have a point that a lot of people have been talking about. This is a resident. I looked up the definition of hospital. This fits more of a hospital.
But it also mentions housing needs and all that stuff.
Okay. A hospital definition is an institution providing medical treatment and nursing care for sick or injured people. Or a hospice, especially one run by Knights of Columbus, I don't know, and an institution.
I don't hear of any of these people being sick or injured.
Well, memory care and, okay, anyways. Do you have nurses, doctors, patients?
We do have, we do have nurses. We do have caregivers. We have med techs. We're responsible for passing out medication when necessary in the memory care wing. That's a very specialized type of care that includes both nursing, but also occupational care to keep people both mobile and to meet their specific dietary restrictions for each one of them. So it's 24/7 care.
Councilmember Kalnick. Thank you. I appreciate everyone coming down and the length of time we've gone through on this There was a lot of issues that were brought up tonight. I don't think we need to rehash a lot of them, but I think some of the discussion and some of the appellant rhetoric, I think, is disingenuous to try to hit on a hot-button issue, threatening council members from the podium, driving trucks around the building, saying that this is high-density residential. Like, if you listen to what is described, the marketing pieces that they are putting out versus what is in the land use designation for the property, one's a marketing piece and one is the land use designation for what is before us. They can go and talk about apartment living for this, but what the land use is is an assisted living facility where folks spend probably between 22 and 24 months there before they go into skilled nursing. Like, this, you are aging into an area where you are being cared for. Mayor Proton Burns, I believe you were reviewing the findings for approval and what you were going through when you were asking all your, all of the questions.
I went through everything.
Yeah, but, I mean, the document you were reviewing was the findings for approval, which are most of the policies and plans and goals that you were talking about were straight out of the general plan, and these are effectively used to support the legal findings for an approval or not approval.
And there are unanswered questions with, I don't see any kind of justification in the planning and all the documentation. I haven't been briefed by the, like you guys have, by the developers, but.
I, I mean, I met with them to.
It's all new to me.
I met with them to answer my questions. I mean, this is to go to Planning Commission a month or so ago. The environmental impact report, I think, answers almost all of your questions you had. I know it's a long document, but it was published six months ago. And so I think reviewing that, I think, would have been helpful in understanding, I think, some of these questions, asking the developer, talking with staff, I think, would have helped them with that, but.
Wasn't it amended, though?
Mildly. I mean, there's an errata, there's a, the final EIR has the answers to all the questions in it, and then it has a rata for things that were changed, but you didn't have to reread the whole thing to see what was from the original one to the new one. I mean, they explained what changed between the two projects, and actually, it got less intensive, so, I mean, the details on that, I think, were.
Like I said, pedestrian traffic, the noise, the beeping, and all that kind of stuff. I didn't see that.
Yeah, but the pedestrian traffic, so in the noise study that would have been an appendix to the EIR would have discussed the noise modeling that they would have done in order to understand that.
I didn't see it.
But if they have circulation for the project, the fans wouldn't need to back up. They enter one way, exit the other way, or they can go down underneath the project.
Well, they have a bay. I've seen there, there's a pulling bay for them, too.
Sure, but it's on the other side of the project. There's also currently a parking lot there that has deliveries now, that has a route around back for deliveries for the current office use. It is three stories. I think to address the senior population increasing and our population decreasing is that people are moving out of Huntington Beach because it's unaffordable, leaving the folks that are in housing already and therefore increasing our age, and as they get older, they get older and therefore increase our senior population. It's the reason our schools are closing. There's not enough younger families able to move here, and therefore, median age continues to increase. I was surprised when it was nearly 44. Last I had heard, it was 42, and that was only, I think, two or three years ago, so.
Wouldn't it go up, though, if we keep building senior homes and importing a lot of people who are aging?
You could make that argument.
85 years old is the average, and they're going to have, they're going to probably have over 160 in there.
Yeah, you could, you could see that, I mean, you had at least four people said that their parents would probably qualify to move in here, right? Or they would be there in a couple of years. So I would say that some people may come from out of town, but I don't think you're going to drastically increase our senior population by building 159 rooms for this. So I would just say that, like, there is a need. The market would not be building this if it was going to be vacant, right? I mean, I trust the free market and free enterprise, that the market tends to build what the market's asking for, and if they said that, that they wanted, that this was going to be daycare facility because the market demanded affordable daycare, you know, for four stories, then that would be what the market's demanding. But the market's demanding.
Believe me, I don't blame them for trying to ask for a big project like this. I mean, they want to maximize profit.
I don't disagree.
I just think that it's our job to keep them in check because it's like some guy coming in, you're an employer, and he wants, and he's a $30 employer, I mean, employee, and he comes in and says, "I want 50 bucks an hour." Well, hey, pal, get out of here.
Right.
No, come back, and he comes back with, "Yeah, I want 40 bucks and $2.50 because service charge," or something. And then, no, he's still, and then, if he gets that, we got to pay all the other employees that, and it's going to ruin the company, the employee, I mean, the company can't survive paying that kind of wage, and it's painful, and it's just destructive. And in this case, I think a big project like that is going to be destructive to the area. It just doesn't fit. It just, we can't afford to have something like that right there. I mean, there's places in this town that that would be okay. That, there's places, I think, that that might not be a bad project, but not there. I think that's a, you heard shoe horn, but I, there's, I think it's.
So what if I told you that if you knocked 20,000 square feet off the building, it would meet code? But then you'd lose the facilities to maintain the assisted-living facility there.
It's not our job to make a project fit in the size of a property. Are you claiming?
I didn't yield my time, Councilmember McKin.
Yes, of course.
I, it may have been rhetorical, but the idea is that the building envelope from Warner and Bolsochica, if you took 20,000 square feet out of the middle of the building, would not change, under code, under what we agreed on as a city, is our commercial general code. It is 50 feet, and you, the setback's actually more than what the code allows for, but you'd have that exact same building envelope. It would be hollowed out, you'd have 20,000 square feet hollowed out, you'd have, not a, you know, rec room would be gone, and one of the kitchens would be gone, but you'd still have 159 units there. But our code allows for a building like this. Like, we've had that discussion.
Then why go specific plan?
Because our code, because when we.
We have to change the code for it to fit.
No. Let me, let me see if I can explain this one, because this is, I think, where it gets into the nuance of how old our zoning code is and the cost to man, to cost to build something now. I don't believe this pencils at a smaller building, right? I think that the fact that the cost of labor, the cost of construction, the cost of materials have gone up precipitously since, I mean, the general plan was 10 years ago, but, I mean, I think we all know how expensive everything's gotten the last 10 years, but the last time we did the, when I asked the question earlier of Jennifer Viesenior, Community Development Director, was have we done an analysis of our zoning code and our general plan to see if they jibe, right? To see if, what is buildable under our zoning code? Pencils, right? Like, the FAR for 1.5 may not pencil for any assisted-living facility. It may not, at all. That just the economics no longer work anymore based on what we have in our code, and I don't, we have not analyzed that in a very long time to see if our code's even buildable. And I think staff is, I don't know if they go on record with the opinion of that, but it's, in some of these cases, is unbuiltable at the current FAR. So they're asking for a 10% deviation, which, under the current code, could potentially happen from the director's position, for a building that is allowed effectively with a small, with a CUP from the zoning administrator for the use on this type of property. And that CUP to make the findings for, to make the findings for denial for that would be very difficult. So they're asking for a small deviation for the FAR, for the density, but it's not the residential density, it's for the use density, for all the amenities for senior living, when everything, everyone agrees that we need more of these facilities in town as the city ages, so that the idea of walkability, all of that, I mean, these folks aren't out walking across in Bolsochica, and in mind, I add that Bolsochica and Warner are arterial highways in our city, or they are part of the master plan of arterial highways. These are not small residential streets. They have massive load-carrying capacity.
I noted that, yeah.
Yeah, but I think the issue comes down to, like, what is the traffic generated by an assisted-living facility? Minimal. I mean, I've driven by Merrill Gardens, and I don't think I've ever seen a car come in and out of that, and I'm driving by it multiple times a week, going to Golden View for football or whatever else, we're driving by Home Depot. I've never seen a car come out of that. And I guess it comes down to, like, yes, if they have a Mother's Day or Christmas, that most of the time, family are picking their family members up and bringing them somewhere, but if they are, there may be a parking impact for that, right? But I think that's any use, right? I think that if there's a parking impact on my street when someone has a party, but I'm not going to make, you know, a house build, a parking structure for the party that they're going to have one time a year or two times a year, right? That's just the point of, I make the reference of, if we want a Costco, we're going to have to sacrifice parking every so often, right? Because we're all going to have to live together to have the density in the city to have a Costco pencil for us. So having this facility here that's effectively the envelope of, because I've heard a lot, it's too tall, it's too this, it's code on the, what you see from the street is code no matter what the FAR is. I mean, what you see there is what you see there. It's the amenities for the seniors. The parking, I've seen, like, four parking studies analyzed 15 different ways, beds, units, the ITE manual that shows that the parking is adequate. I mean, you look at Merrill Gardens, which has parked at less of a ratio than this. This is more parking than that. So, I mean, we're down to traffic, like, I, I think that, you know, the current traffic is much higher in a commercial use, double, but then you look at, and I always will say, what does no get us? What's allowed under that current use that would impact the residents in a greater way, I would say would be a grocery store or something like that. That would have 100 times the car trips that are currently there, and would massively impact that intersection. I mean, there's a lot of other thing, of other uses. This is, I think, one of the lowest-impact uses you could have there, and it's effectively what our code already recognizes the use there.
I am not, I want to go again, I do not oppose the project as a senior living facility. I think it's great. It's just a little rude to the area. It is, I think it's not neighborhood-friendly. I don't like it being a specific plan.
Sure.
And it's, it's big.
Well, I mean, the code allows for specific plans over two acres, so it's, I mean, when we, effectively, we're having tools in our code that allow someone to get there, and then we're moving the goalposts on them, right? They're asking for a small deviation to make their unique project fit, and they've got case law, and they've effectively, I think, demonstrated that our code does not pencil for assisted-living facilities like this.
But it's our responsibility to make decisions that are best for our community, our city and our people, the residents, the area, everything, right? And that's what my main concern is, that I think that in the best interest, I would like to study it more. I need more information. Like I said, I just have had, like, four, three days to look at all this information, basically.
I mean, this passed the Planning Commission a month ago, Mayor Proton Burns, like, the information has been available for more than a month.
I don't think a month. I think it was late September, the last one I just looked at. I just watched the me, part of the meeting this afternoon.
And, but it was on their agenda a week before that, and staff was available for this.
I feel like I have time to go through every committee and commission to review things.
But we knew this project, but we knew this project was coming, right? Like, I mean, there was ample time to review all of this information.
What's the rush?
I mean, it's, well, we have a tick tock, and I think we have an obligation to applicants, this project came before us more than a year ago. They decided that it was untenable at that rate, and they wanted to get more community input and came back with this project. I mean, at some point, we become anti-business by, I think, lagging out a project for more than a year when they're asking, I mean, they have an opportunity, due process, to come before us to ask.
I don't want to be anti-community either, though.
Correct, but we have a community of 200,000 people, and, you know, what is it, 4,000 of them are over 85, based on demographic information, and we're always going to have the folks that live around anything that comes before us not want it, right? I mean, we did this a month ago with Magnolia Tank Farm, and the folks around it didn't want it, but the community at large, and our job is to look holistically at, you know, what maintains and sustains Huntington Beach as a whole and what creates a vibrant community, which is, I think, what you see in some of the findings. And I think that's, you know, where I've come down, is that.
As of 2020, 85-plus is 4,659.
Sure, and that number's probably gotten greater since.
We've opened up other.
No, I think it's just gotten greater because people got older. I think people aged into that.
Well, according to this, too, our death rate's up.
As folks are getting older. So again, I've been reviewing this project and dug through the whole thing to try to find out, like, okay, what's, when anybody comes to us and asks us for a deviation, I say, "Well, what's code? What, what are they asking for deviations on?" I think variances for this project don't work because it's a square lot. You could maybe make findings, and variance findings are much more difficult to make. And I think, honestly, I think our code does not make these types of facilities pencil. I think the, what the applicant was talking about, what was across the street, is that they had to trade land effectively from a land use in order to make that FAR work.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, they basically, they, they game the system effectively. They game the system in order to get to an FAR that worked because they had to trade a parking lot that doesn't, isn't theirs, and then had to sign a reciprocal parking agreement in order to make that whole project work. So they, they acknowledge, again, that the FAR does not work for this type of use. But anyway, I think it gets back to, this is a low-impact use, that we foresaw the height in our code because our code allows 50 feet. It meets the setback requirements. The traffic and parking, I think, are adequate. I think that, again, the traffic, if this was deep in a residential neighborhood, you'd see some traffic impacts, but it's on a, what, there's three, six lanes on one direction, and the, as it, as Bolsochica comes in, it's six in the others, you've got six, you know, you've got a lot of traffic capacity for a 159-bed, ten, fewer than 10% of the people have cars that are there, and you've got, you know, basic businesses, but if that shopping center was full, you would see, you always have to take it as like the maximum use of that shopping center, you would see a lot more traffic than what this convoluted facility would have, so, you know, I.
Then do you go by the maximum use of the facility, too?
Correct.
Beyond, like, a Mother's Day or?
I mean, that is the worst-case scenario. I'm just saying, like, in an average day, if you had everybody coming into work, based on the square footage and the number of parking spots required by the three-story building that's currently there, I, you're going to see a much more impactful car trips in addition to parking require, parking impacts as well. And when that was at a full, in 1978, when that building was built and fully leased up, I, it's wild to see that that building's been there that long. But you hear the, the property owners, and, you know, I'm a big supporter of property rights, that they're saying, "Look, like, we need to exercise our property rights here. The city's zoning code, you know, opts for a lot worse impacts," and they're saying, like, "Look, we've passed up on some other projects that we think we wouldn't be proud of," and, you know, when you hear from the property owners to say, like, "We'd be proud to see this in our community," I think it's a good project at this point. So as I said, I seconded the motion. I'll be supportive of this. I'm, you know, the, I think, I said, I'm very disappointed in the opposition's use of rhetoric to try, I think, scare folks, and the van that drove across the, around the parking lot almost caused me to get in an accident on the way here because it was absolutely distracting, and so I will, I will be supporting this tonight. Thank you.
We should move the meeting past 11.
Just, yeah.
Second that motion.
Wait a minute, whoa.
We need to vote on that?
No.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Raise your hands. All right, that's very good. I have a question. Councilmember Strickland, you said pass the staff recommendation along with a deed restriction. Can you explain that a bit further so I can get it into the record?
My understanding is, I did some research, that we have the ability as a council to do a deed restriction, that this is a property that is only memory care, and I want to make sure I get exactly right.
I can help you out. So on the conditional use permit, it would amend the condition on the conditional use permit to have the applicant file a deed restriction to require the land use to be memory care and assisted living only.
So yours would be an amendment to the original?
Yeah, it adds because there's been some, there's been some talk in the community that says, three years down the line, they're going to change this and make it more independent living, or they'll make it an apartment, and so I want to make sure we're clear that we do a deed restriction on this property.
We actually have a, a dra, a condition drafted up if you want us to read it.
Yes, please.
Be fine for you.
Please.
Okay, certainly.
Nice, thank you.
All right, thank you. So again, per direction from Councilmember Strickland, we'd be adding condition number 11, I believe, to the CUP, and that would state, "Prior to the issuance of any building permits, the applicant shall submit a restrictive covenant declaring that the owner agrees to operate the Bolsochica Senior Care Project as a residential care facility for the elderly that, as that term is defined in California Code of Regulations Title 22, Section 87101, and restricted to the square footage number and type of units, assisted and assisted living and memory care only. This covenant shall be recorded and run with the land and shall be referenced in any instrument of transfer of the property and noticed to the City of Huntington Beach via registered mail and/or delivery prior to any such transfer of conveyance of the property." And that is based on template language, but.
Does that work?
That's what I meant to say.
We also, very briefly, since we have you, we also have one additional condition that we'd like to add, that staff wants to add as a response to the latest SAFER letter. So can we read that, too, and suggest adding it to the amended?
Please.
So, thank you. In response, staff is requesting an additional condition, that the applicant agrees to provide tier-four diesel-rated, heavy-duty diesel equipment for the duration of construction of the facility.
And that goes in the mitigation measures? Or does that go in the CUP? Or does it matter?
That would be a condition of approval on the CUP.
Right.
Mayor, I'd like to, just want to address a comment you made, Councilmember Kalnick. So you said our, our current code doesn't make these projects pencil at 1.5 floor-area ratio. That doesn't make sense. So you're using semantics, but what you're really saying is that these projects only pencil out at a certain size to make work, which means they need to find a property that's big enough to meet the 1.5 floor-area ratio. As an example, the one right across the street managed to meet the 1.5 floor-area ratio. Now, it's not gamesmanship or work in the system, they're able to obtain more property to fold into their project. This property can probably do the same thing. Why don't they approach their neighbors? Maybe they can't, maybe they, they can't. It's not our job to make it fit. The property's too small, so it's semantics, and to say it's not high-density, well, it's intensity, it's the same thing, it's just, again, you're using semantics. Are you trying to say that this project is not high-density?
So let me address the first thing. They didn't have enough parking to meet the project. So the FAR with the parking didn't have enough land on a giant parcel across the street. So they had to do a reciprocal parking agreement. So therefore, our.
What?
Our code for the land that they had allocated for that project didn't allow them to make that project pencil.
Okay, so they were able to, you know?
Do a reciprocal parking agreement. They did not have enough parking to make it work. They didn't have parking.
Yeah, again, they made it work, they were able to meet the 1.5 floor-area ratio requirement. They did not require a specific plan. So to say that our code doesn't allow these projects to pencil to make financial sense, that's not true. It's just that these projects have to be a certain size to pencil to make sense, which means they need to find a big enough property in order to fit. Just like I said, like, with Chick-fil-A, they're not, they're not going to go on a half-acre property on a gas station site because they need an acre.
Sure.
Right? So it's the same concept.
Well, but then you, in your comments, you said they don't need a specific plan. Most specific plans are limited to two acres.
Well, okay, yeah, but it's, it's, it's an analogy, okay, it's an analogy of, you know what size property you need for your project. Every developer does. They found a good location, it's in the harbor, but unfortunately, the property's just too small. So, either they got to shrink their project to make it fit, or they have to require the use of a specific plan. And that's where, that's where the red line is for me, is that unfortunately, this property is just a little bit too small. It's not our job to make these projects fit on properties that are too small. It's just not.
And from my perspective, again, I point out the recent Superior Court case involving a senior care facility that found substantial evidence that to support zoning variances allows increase in floor area ratio, because special requirements for elderly care facilities make it almost impossible to build them under regular zoning laws, the city zoning laws. That's a Superior Court ruling. And then, I would also point out, just for the community, a lot of the community's been talking about the setbacks and the height. That's within. The only thing that's not is a floor area ratio plan, and if we were to restrict it, it would just take away all the amenities from the salon to the restaurant to everything else. And the project that some people have called a monstrosity would be the same outside. You'd only see something different on the inside.
Yeah, but again, like, your point in the Supreme Court is the same concept, that the property, sorry, the same thing is that the property's too small. So, go find a bigger property. I mean, that's basically what it is, because then when you create this specific plan, it creates all these ripple effects, where the setbacks are too small, and it needs to be taller, and all these things, all these issues that are created. Because, again, you're shoehorning too big of a project and too small of a property. And so, this, this specific plan now cascades across all these other issues. If it was the right size, you'd have enough parking, you'd have enough setbacks.
Well, I would argue, and I would argue... When this came to us back in, like, June or July, I do remember this, and they said they couldn't make it any smaller than they had back then because it didn't pencil out. I do not, say it again, I don't blame them for trying to maximize profits. That's their thing, but it's our job to keep them in check. It's, we don't give away contracts, we don't give away land, we don't give away things. We keep, we have to be responsible and keep this kind of thing in check, and be responsible to the people in the community. And this, right now, I think they can make it pencil out if we do it within the general plan.
But Pat, I would like to point...
Cutting facilities, that's a soft issue. Cut two rooms out, cut a few rooms out or something. I don't know, but I think they're hitting a soft, "Oh, God, they won't get a salon, they won't get this." Ah, I think they can probably keep those things and maybe go down to 155.
And the community's opposition has been talking about, again, I'm using their words, monstrosity. Again, if you did a different floor area ratio plan, nothing on the outside would be changed. And in fact, when you look at, again, you were talking about parking or traffic. I mean, the traffic, where is it? Right here. Where is it? I gotta look at it again. Bear with me. The traffic study, where is this? Yeah. This proposed project is a least intensive by use, by a lot, and the existing use today produces doubled amount of traffic than what this proposed hospital is. And in terms of the parking, it's 35% more than Merrill Gardens, and Merrill Gardens has independent living, and...
Where'd that study come from?
It was in our, it's in our package.
Yeah, but who, again, I didn't, it says that, but they also told us it wouldn't pencil out six months ago.
But they dropped a bunch of independently, they dropped a bunch of what the project was asking for, so it didn't pencil out.
But it still needs a specific plan. What I'm saying is, that's why I want to see studies. I want to see some information that shows that stuff, not just that they say it, because they also say that a lot of things in these, this paperwork we got, I'm reading and reading, and I'm going, it just drew more questions than I had before. And them saying that they're going to have to cut out facilities, or it won't pencil out, I don't buy it, just because they said it last time.
But Pat, like, I also don't want to set a precedent where, again, you know, property's too small, said project's too big, so let's just whip up a specific plan to make it fit. And if this use is, as everyone has set up here, is going to be more prevalent with an aging demographic, we got to get it right. And the way to get it right is to make it fit in the current code and the general plan, or make the project smaller. If you want to talk about updating the general plan and, you know, long-term goal, then that's, that's another topic of conversation, but I don't want to set a precedent with jamming in a project that's too big on us, with a, via a specific plan, just to make this project fit on too small of a property. So, I think it just sets a bad precedent, and we need to get it right.
I'd like to ask a question of the staff. I want to confirm something that I thought I heard earlier. Is it the case that the current building doesn't comply with the setback requirements for the commercial general zoning?
That's correct. Most specifically, it's the, along the western property line.
Okay. So, it, it's possible that regardless of which way the decision goes, we may end up being sued by the applicant or the appellant. And so, my concern is that whatever decision we make is defensible, and so, and I'm looking at it from a legal perspective, and whether a decision is defensible. And so, as I read things, our decision has to be, has to not be arbitrary or capricious, and it has to be supported by substantial evidence. If the applicant is only asking for a 10% variance from the required FAR, based on the cases that Mr. Strickland referenced, I don't think that that's an unreasonable request, and it certainly is not arbitrary and capricious for a body to grant that type of variance per what the court ruled in those cases. We've heard from the community that there is a feeling that there is a need for this type of service, or this type of facility, and we've heard data concerning the aging population that we have, and we all certainly know firsthand that the population is aging. We're all aging, we have aging parents or, you know, loved ones, who are going to be looking for this type of service. I've talked to a lot of people in the community as well, and, you know, all of your points are very well-taken. This is a really contentious issue. And so, you know, I just want to make it clear that I have listened to everything that everyone has to say. So, thank you.
Can I ask one question, Hayden? You say, right now, the floor area ratio is 1.6, 1.68?
The revised project is approximately 1.68.
So, it's a little more than 10%, right? Wouldn't it be 1.65 if it was 10%, not .68?
Well, I don't have the exact figures in front of me, but the 10% is a generalization. Yeah.
I'm just, that's why I'm asking. It seems like it exceeds that 10%. That's all.
Councilmember Moser.
Thank you. Well, this has been a good and interesting conversation. I think that it's important to note, and I think we've seen that, that there is a need. The demographics and statistics clearly show that Huntington Beach is facing a growing need for senior housing, senior living, and memory care facilities at all affordability levels, due to increasing lifespan and, you know, just the demand for specialized services as well. I appreciate that the developer was responsive to the community by reducing the size of the project by around 30%, removing the independent living, resulting in a decrease potentially of traffic, even though it's already a lower intensity of use. They reduced the height, so it's now within the zoning requirements, so it's no longer deviating with regards to the height. They changed the entrance location to deal with the concerns about queuing. I think there's a very high-quality design from the outside, and they've also shortened the construction time. We do hear from the community, and we did meet with the community members, with regards to the concerns about the size of the project. And I think, I'll repeat what's already been said, which is, this meets the zoning requirements for the size of the project, from what you see visually from the outside. The height doesn't deviate, it is the FAR. But from what you see from the outside, if it got gutted from the inside, it would still look the same, and that would match the code. With regards to FAR, we've been talking about the deviation from that. I think that it's been noted here, that with the use of, with particular use, if it decreased, the experience would tremendously change for the, you can call them patients or residents. And it's been noted why, with that Superior Court case, that, let me pull it up, that these types of facilities, unlike residential or just normal commercial buildings, they need to prioritize accessibility, safety, and functionality for residents with mobility challenges or cognitive impairments, which means wider hallways, larger common areas, and secure outdoor spaces, all of which require more square footage. All of that being said, in addition to the fact that we've talked about an increase in our aging community, in older adults, my concern actually is, if it's been this difficult for this to be approved, I'm wondering if, for the future, we do need to look at some, you know, senior care, commercial use. Is there a need for updated zoning code with regards to the FAR? It sounds like it is. It sounds like that might be something, and it's not with, in this particular moment, that I think we should do that, but I do think that we need to bring that forward. Is that, how would that look if we were to do that in the future? Not with this project, per se, but making changes.
It would look like a change through the general plan, like a general plan update or an amended zoning code for that specific use or that type of use classification.
Okay, thank you. I think it's our job to consider how to support our community now and into the future, and that means including for residents at all periods of life, from supporting young people and young families, to aging families, to supporting our older community, and that means looking out for the entirety of the community, so, and also looking out into our future. So, I think we should consider that as we move forward. I do think that this is an investment in our community, and it will fill a need for the community. I, I don't, I do think that, you know, you hear a lot of language and semantics, and a lot of fear-driven language, you know, the, any development in this community, it seems, is a no. And that is not, that's not something that's reasonable for a community that needs to be thriving community. I think that the language that's used is disingenuous, and just tries to feed on that community fear about high-density development and that language. And, you know, we heard HDD, monstrosity, money grab, the first domino, it's all fear-based. This is not high-density residential development. That is misinformation, that is disingenuous. Do these units count for the regional housing needs allocation?
No, they don't.
Right. This isn't residential, correct?
It would be considered a facility under our zoning code use classification.
Okay, thank you.
Doesn't their paperwork say that, though?
So, yeah, Oscar?
Doesn't some of the paperwork that we received say that it does help address RENA mandates or something like that?
If they would have had independent living units, then we would have counted the independent living units toward our above-moderate or market-rate RENA category, income category, but because it only includes assisted living and memory care, we cannot count those.
Well, okay, that's why I'm asking, though. Some of the paperwork received says that it does, because I know I highlighted it. I was like, "What?" So, if I find it, I'll tell you where it...
Yeah, previously, the previous project included that because of the independent, independent living, which was removed. I think that it has sufficient parking, based upon the study. It had, the traffic is the least intense use. Again, I, for me, I think it's a need in the community, we've all agreed upon that. I think that the other piece is, what I hear is, it's, looks too big. The look of it, though, under our current zoning is allowed. The envelope of the building is allowed, so, and it's meeting a need, it's the least intense use. I think it's positive for the economic development of the city. I think that you, we see all these, you know, the strip malls and the concerns about the use of retail, and I think that we need to think about how to use the space. And this developer has found this space and is able to provide a service to the community. You know, I, it's not only for people, you know, you talked about basically importing seniors into the community. I think what this is, is for people who are currently aging in our community, and also it's a resource for people who live in our community, for their parents, for their grandparents as well. So, it's a resource for, for more than that, from people within our community. I appreciate adding the deed restriction to it, because I have heard concerns about it flipping to something else. You know, I think it's difficult for any council member in this community to ever support to, in the feel of... ...the needs that we have, and community... ...continue to thrive. And I think that this project, in its current form, that has been responsive to the community, I think meets the requirements to encourage me to, to support, to support this. So, thank you.
So, we have a substitute motion that moved by Councilmember McKeon, seconded by Mayor Protan Pat Burns.
That was the first motion. Tony was...
That was the first motion. The substitute motion was moved by Strickland and seconded by Kelmek. That's the one we vote on, with the two added conditions of approval.
Can I say one more thing, actually, too? I'm sorry. It's just to reiterate, the threats about, you know, running for office, when we spoke in our meeting, because of the community, and I make the best choices of information that I have at hand, we're your neighbors, and we can disagree, but I want people to know, I hope that all of us serve the public, because we care about our community, and I know that I do. So, I just, I just wanted to say that, too. Thank you.
So, we're voting on the Councilmember Strickland. We're voting on the substitute motion made by Strickland, seconded by Kelmek. Ready?
Okay.
Okay. We'll start the vote. Councilmember Moser. Vandermark?
No.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKeon?
No.
Kelmek?
Aye.
The motion passes 4-3, with Burns, Vandermark, and McKeon voting no. I'd like to read for the record introduction of city ordinance number 4327, an ordinance of the City of Huntington Beach amending the Huntington Beach zoning and subdivision ordinance to rezone the real property generally located at the southwest corner of Warner Avenue at Bolsochica Street, from CG, Commercial General, to SP-19, Specific Plan Number 19, Zoning Map Amendment Number 21-003, Attachment Number 4. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to Councilmember Item Number 19. Member Strickland, would you like to introduce this?
Yes. Thanks for the indulgence. I know it's late in the hour. When I was mayor, I met with a lot of the business leaders and the business, I had Economic Roundtable, and one of the big concerns from a lot of the businesses in the community is that we didn't have enough cultural events or events for the arts, and wanted me to think about a friend. I had the pleasure and opportunity to... ...of Circus Soleil, and... ...to put his new... ...in North America, and I asked him to sit down and... ...things about Huntington Beach, and I tried to encourage him to look here in Huntington Beach. He flew out from Quebec, Canada, looked at the Central Park, thought it would be ideal and perfect for his upcoming thing, Symphony of Flowers is what it's called. I do want to call up, I believe, Glenn Becerra, I don't know if he's left.
He's here.
Oh, no, he's here. Thank you, Mr. Becerra, for hanging around. I, I just think it's important for council members to kind of see, kind of the vision of, I forgot the, I always mispronounce his name, anyway, from Quebec.
Armala Trail.
Yes. That would just direct staff to work with the Symphony of Flowers, to do a feasible study, including environmental impact, for a potential event that I think would be a signature event for Huntington Beach, and would be an economic driver. I'm always looking for different events just like this, to bring in much-needed revenue or a destination city, and I think this is ideal for Huntington Beach. Without further ado, Mr. Becerra.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Strickland, and council, thank you for the opportunity. I'm sorry that it's so late, but I appreciate you allowing me to have some time with you this evening to talk about the show. Councilmember Strickland is correct, Norma Latrelle was one of the original founders of Cirque du Soleil. He left about 25 years ago to start his own company, Cavalier. Some of you may have seen the show that was hosted in Irvine several times. It was in Santa Monica, and it was all around the country, 7 million visitors, and I think it was 100-plus countries that the show visited, and it had the white stallions under the big tent, and we'll, I'll show you, show you that. But Tony's correct in that we've been looking for an ideal site to bring the show to for its world premiere, and I say world premiere because it only ran in Montreal for a very short time, so that we could work out the technology, so that we could make sure that the show was feasible, and to make sure that we could work out the bugs before we went and located it here in the United States. So let me walk you through this presentation real quick. I'll keep it short. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have as we go through, and, I guess, just... Oh, okay, perfect. So we'll go to the next page, please. This is just a brief introduction of Norma, and, and I can, I've left the presentation with the staff, so if any of you want a copy of it, they can make that available to you. I won't go into it, but I gave you a brief description. Norma started, one of the original founders of Cirque, bringing, please, was what we brought to Irvine, Burbank, Santa Monica, here in Southern California, Camarillo, California, and, and again, the show was widely successful, very high quality. The price point of that show was about $150 to $180 per, per ticket, something like you would see when you go to Las Vegas in a Cirque show. The show that we're proposing to bring here is what we call family-friendly, family-affordable. It's going to be an average price of about $35. It, it's, will meet, like going, it'll be a little more expensive than going to a movie. Could we go to the next? Set up everything temporarily on, on the grass area that has been identified, and you, you start the show by sitting in the bleachers. One of the nice things about the way we do things is we don't print, print, printed tickets. Part of that is environmental, part of that is so that we can sell all of our tickets digitally, so that we can control the amount of people that come to any given show. So if there's a concern about the amount of people at any given time, we can actually work with the city to, to restrict the amount of tickets that we sell, so that, you know, we, we would prefer to fill the bleachers. The bleachers can hold up to 2,000 people at a showing, but we could, we could shrink that number down to a lesser, 1,000 people at a time. And again, we would work with you to make sure that we can meet the needs of the city. After the show is over, and the show is, is, it's symphonic music. It's classical music. In Montreal, the, the score that we used was composed by Paul McCartney, and it's a beautiful symphony, and while you're sitting in the bleachers, a story is being told about creation. It's not a religious creation, it's the creation of the universe, and the, you know, and the planets, and it's a very artistic storytelling of creation. And, and through that, you're having the music and the story being told. After, after you're done viewing the show from the bleachers, then you actually become part of the show. You walk into the flower garden, and it takes about 30 minutes or longer, it depends on how long you want to spend in the garden, but you would walk through the garden. We put down a plastic walkway, again, temporary, it pulls up and it doesn't, like it's never been there, but it's, so, everything we do is fully ADA compliant, so that if you're in a wheelchair, if you're, have a walker, I have in-laws that use walkers, all of that works on our, on our walkway, and you can stroll through the show while the show is going on. We, we keep the music, you know, very contained, so that it's not bleeding off the site, and, and again, it's classical music. You won't hear a lot of boom-boom, your windows won't shake, you, you won't experience anything like that. Could we go to the next slide, please? It's, as you can see, when I said it's family-friendly, it's, it is very, it's, it's really more for, you know, a more mature crowd. It's a sophisticated presentation. When Tony described it as art, it is truly a, a living art piece, that is individual flowers. There's 100,000 flowers that are planted in the ground, there's 500,000 flower, lights on the ground, they're all low emitting LED, individual diodes, so that they're not, they don't, again, they don't bleed off-site. And, and we have a water screen that will bring, it's basically a large pool, but it's very low, so, but it needs to have enough water in it so that a water screen can be shown, that can, could be created, and then we project some images on that water screen. It's contained into the pool, and when people are walking around it, you're not getting wet, and things like that. But again, as you can see from the, the target audiences, you know, they're families, they're couples, they're older folks, and it, it really is a show that, that is attractive to all age groups. We'll go to the next slide, please. If you just, you know, take a quick look at your net promoter score, this is the scores that people give when they're willing to promote your brand, when they're willing to recommend your product. And we have a very good score, it's in the, in the high range, and the people that attended enjoyed it, they, they valued it at a high level. Go to the next page, please. This is just the, the social media aspect of it, but if you look at the age groups and the people that are interested, and the way it breaks down per gender, it's, it's a show that, again, has, you know, high value and is very attractive to all groups. Next page, please. And then I will end, I got two more. We pride ourselves on being very environmentally friendly. We don't use porta-potties traditional. We bring in bathrooms that actually connect to your sewer system, because we don't want to use the porta-potties, because they have a lot of extra chemicals in them. Little things like that. We, all of our food merchandise is sold with products, you know, that are, are in containers that is recyclable and not plastics. We, you know, we, we promote public transit, and, and where, where we can buy, because we obviously use electricity, where we can buy green energy, we, we prefer to do that. So, that's, that's, that's a decision that we, we make if it's available. So, but we want you to know that those are the kinds of things that we look for, those are the kinds of things that we, we, we try to make sure that, you know, we're meeting the environmental needs of the, of the community. And then the last page is actually the way we work with the community. We appreciate the opportunity to do the environmental reports, to make sure that we are going into an area that, and, and going into an area in a way that does not disrupt the use. I've walked that park a number of times, I've gone on the weekends, I've gone during the week, I've watched the way people use that part of the park to stroll and to walk their dogs, and to enjoy the repairing areas around there and all of that, and we want to be very respectful of that area. It's a beautiful area. It, it wasn't overly utilized, you know, as far as, like, there wasn't a lot of people at any one given time, which I think makes this area nice. It'll bring a lot of people to that area to let them see how beautiful that part of the park really is. It's adjacent to the library. We've been working with library staff, Ashley is here, to work on ways to generate revenue for the library as part of what we do. And we'll work with charitable groups, we're going to look at working with your employment development, and if there's local hiring, if you have young people that are looking for jobs, those are all the kinds of things that we'll do as a, as a company. The last thing I'll say, and I, you know, I heard some concerns when I first got here from some of the public speakers, we're temporary. Everything we do is temporary. We, the way we find the site is the way we'll leave the site. If you don't like the show, we don't have to come back, but we would love the opportunity to come, because we think that if you, if you allow us to come, you'll love what we do here, and the partnership that we would create with your city. And so let me end there, because I know it's late, and I'm happy to answer any questions, but I am grateful for the opportunity to be here with you tonight.
So, thank you for the presentation, and you showed us a video before, it actually looks pretty awesome, the, the video. We were, I remember when we met, we discussed the library benefiting financially from the show as well. Could you tell us a little bit about that?
Well, yeah, one of the things that's nice about our show is that it's at night. The park is utilized a lot during the day. We're going to utilize a spot on the park at night, so there's parking at the, the library. Our biggest days are Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. We would like to operate probably five, four to five days out of the week. We probably would not operate seven days a week, but on those nights where we could do, use the parking from the library, we've talked to the staff about letting, you know, revenue sharing on the parking, and, and, you know, having all the, you know, and having the money that's generated from the parking, from the guests that are coming to the show, go directly to the library as one way to raise some money. We also are working with city staff on putting together certain amounts of tickets that we would give, that could, I guess, the way you do it here is that you put, you do like basically a random drawing for charitable organizations to benefit, so that no one's, you know, playing favorites, and we're happy to support those types of events. We also know that there's organizations in town that service, that provide service to lower-income individuals, and we want this show to be seen by everybody. So where there are people that can't afford to go, we'll give tickets to those organizations to make sure that those families can go and attend. So there's a lot of different ways that we'll engage with the public to do charitable work and to, you know, to, to provide the benefit of the show, because it's beautiful, it's worth seeing, to, you know, to all income levels. And again, our show is affordable. It's not, it's, it's, you know, again, our last show was, was, was very expensive. It was $150, $180, depending if you bought a VIP ticket or not. This show is affordable, and again, the average price will be $35.
Thank you, and I think this question might be for Ashley. We had a couple of people make comments both online and as they spoke here. They said, we're taking over our park. When we spoke, you had mentioned that that area of the park was underutilized around that time. Would that be accurate?
Sure, so depending on the time of year, we do, it is used for our overnight family camp out and some other temporary events as well, Civil War days, the reenactment. So depending on the time of year, there, it's typically used more in a passive capacity.
Okay, thank you.
But also, Mayor, on that, too, so the entire Central Park is 343 acres, and they're talking about utilizing 5.7 acres. So, I just want people, sent some emails, I'm concerned about taking up a lot of park space, so that's going to leave 337 acres remaining of Central Park for people to enjoy.
And it's like you said, if, if it doesn't work out this time, then you don't have to come back. But I do think that the city, that we should give you guys opportunity and give the residents an opportunity to have an event like this.
Yeah, and we'd appreciate, and look, we're excited about coming to your city. Your city is a destination. People come here for all sorts of reasons. We've already met with Kelly over at Visit Huntington Beach about how we can put packages together so people can come see our show, stay the night, go to the restaurants, do, you know, go to the beach the next day. So we're looking at, you know, even trying to maximize what we do for your, your, you know, your economic development and for visitors, you know, to come and see your great city. It's, this is, you know, again, we would love to be here. It's a great city. You all know it's a great city, and your residents know it's a great city. I just watched, you know, hours of debate, and they're here because they love this community on both sides of the issues, and I value that. I served on my city council for 20 years. From, I'm from Simi Valley, and I'm a native of California. I was, my family's been in Simi Valley 100-plus years, and so watching you all do your business up here, I'm glad I'm not up there anymore, that I'm back here. But you, you have that engagement because people love this community, and they want to fight for it. I believe what we will bring to your community is a beautiful, high-end show that's sophisticated, that is available and affordable to all. It is, somebody, one of the speakers brought up the Sensari show up in Paso Robles. It's similar to that, you know, except that ours is, is not as, it's more confined as far as the area that we need. It's more affordable. We, we aren't planning on being there. Sensari's been there year after year after year. I think they've, they're on five or 10 years up there, and it's in an agricultural area. It's a very environmentally sensitive area, and they don't have any issues. That's why I'm, I'm not concerned about the environmental studies going on. I'm glad that you're doing that. It, you know, we want to be sensitive to the environment, but this show will, I was not going to say put you on the map, you're already on the map. We would love to be part of the map that is Huntington Beach.
So, Mr. Becerra, thanks for coming here. Again, a lot of what you've just described is why I lobbied to try to make sure we sell Huntington Beach. As much as you want to be here, I can only speak from my perspective. We're looking for signature events like this. We are a destination community, and I think this would be incredible value add to Huntington Beach. So thank you for being here, and I would like to move this item, again, it's an H-item, to direct staff to work with Symphony of Flowers on the feasibility and agreement, and any agreement would have to come back to the council.
Second. Can we ask questions now? Sure. Okay. Yeah, no, I, I think that the staff, my questions are mostly for staff, so, yeah, that's why. Thank you for being here, though.
I'm here if you need me.
Sure, thanks. So, this item came up before, and there were a lot of questions for which we did not have answers, so I appreciate the item coming back as an H-item, so that we can get, so that we can ask our questions and get the answers that we need to those questions. So I just want to make sure we talk through what questions we expect to be answered. So from my perspective, I just want to make sure I understand what type of environmental review is going to be done, for example.
I can answer that. Right now, we're going to be doing an environmental checklist, so that's like a preliminary study. We'll do some technical focus studies, a biological resources reconnaissance survey, so field study, and then a database study, a noise study, and then a traffic assessment.
Okay, and is that a preliminary thing, or is that the entirety of the environmental study?
Well, so the checklist will essentially inform what the next step in SEQA would be. So the checklist will either say that there's no impact, and it can be an exemption, or possibly be covered under the master plan EIR, or there might be further environmental review. It just depends on what the checklist says.
Okay. And then there had been some questions from residents about what the anticipated duration would be for the show, so just want to clarify what that would be.
So based on what's been talked about, it's looking at, currently, which obviously is part of the process as we move through this with the environmental and feasibility and things like that, but what's been initially discussed is in its entirety approximately eight months. That would include install and teardown, and it would be looking at about a six-month showtime.
And when do you anticipate this starting?
It would obviously be contingent upon completion of the SEQA and, or the environmental review, I shouldn't say SEQA, and whatever comes from that, that the reason we want to do this is because we want to do it right, and we want to look at everything before we move forward with something like this.
And so it was mentioned that the bleachers can hold as many as 2,000 people, and that once one group sees the show, they may go out into the field, and another group could come in, so is the potential max 4,000 people in that space at one time?
So, I, yeah.
Sure.
That would be the absolute maximum, right? So you would have the 2,000 in the state, or initial 2,000, and then they would move off, like you had said, and you could have another 2,000 in there. But we can limit that if that's what's determined.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so we definitely wanna make sure we understand what our parking capacity is, you know, if we did have 4,000 people, like, how many cars would that be? I'm assuming not every individual would arrive in their own car, but just how many cars would that represent, and, you know, how would that impact parking? So, we're talking about weekends or weekdays, or has that not been determined yet?
So based on what was provided, it looks like, weekends, yes, because that's what's anticipated to be the busy days, and then a few days throughout the week. And obviously, as mentioned in the presentation, they are heavily invested in utilizing public transit, so trying to be as least impactful as possible on parking. I know that staff's already kind of been talking about some potential ideas of how we can maybe mitigate parking impacts, and allocating spaces, and for the event, and making best use of closure times of the library, and showtimes, and things of that nature, so it is something that is being thought about, and is something that will be continued to look at as we look at the feasibility of this event.
Okay, and then impacts to surrounding neighborhoods, is that gonna be studied as part of this environmental checklist, or is that a different step?
It would be studied to the extent that there's an environmental impact, so for instance, the noise study will look at any sensitive receptors, mostly the noise will be looking at sensitive wildlife receptors, and then the traffic assessment, obviously, will be looking at the extent to which the surrounding communities impacted by traffic. There will be some land use component, but it'll be mostly qualitative analysis.
There needs to be some type of neighborhood engagement plan for any traffic impacts, 'cause, I mean, we all hate getting yelled at by residents who, you know, something comes up, there's some kind of event or issue, and there's a traffic impact, and residents say, "Well, we didn't expect this to happen," or "We didn't know anything about this," so I do wanna make sure that we consider what type of engagement we're gonna do with the neighborhoods that may be impacted in advance. And so, talking about use of the park, so the, I guess the assessment at this point is that this is an area of the park that you say is underutilized, I just wanna make sure we quantify what that means, because, you know, for that part of the park, I mean, I don't know how many people use that area at this time of the year, so it would be helpful to understand exactly what kind of impact we're having on park utilization. Let's see, okay, so in terms, it was mentioned that the show operator intends to return the area to its original condition, so I just wanna make sure, you know, we understand that that means like original condition, if there's any damage to irrigation or anything like that, is that something that typically happens? You know, we just wanna make sure that we don't end up with taxpayers having to pay for restoration of, you know, anything that's damaged, and then finally, definitely wanna understand all of the different types of wildlife that are in that area, and how they might be impacted. So, is it staff's intention to come back with an agreement, or come back with data? Because I don't know, I mean, it seems like an agreement would be premature, if we don't even have any information on the environmental impact.
So obviously, based on the results of the environmental impact, that could make a determination as to whether or not an agreement may be even warranted, but our hopes is that, our hopes are, that the environmental impact will show that based on the show that is being described, will have, will not have an impact on the environment, that would put us in a position where we would be able to negotiate some sort of agreement, and bring that back to council for consideration. Obviously, at that time, we'd be able to provide all the data and the information based on the environmental impact study that we are doing, and the feasibility study that we're doing, and obviously, taking into consideration the feedback we're getting now, and if at that time, that that's not something they wanna pursue, that is obviously an option.
Okay, just remember to build in time for the public to understand what this impact is, and for them to digest that information, because, again, you know, people seem to come, and they often seem to report that they don't feel like they had enough time or enough notice to consider what we're talking about here, so I wanna make sure that they have ample time, once we get all of this data, to review it, and be prepared to respond to it.
Understood.
Thank you. Does anybody else? Oh, Councilmember Kalmick.
Couple more questions, so, we talked about all these studies that we're doing, who's paying for those?
So as we go down the negotiation path with the vendor, that would typically in a permit or an agreement, that is something that's covered by the special event operator, so that would be part of the negotiation process as we move forward.
Okay, but if we do the environmental checklist, and it comes out to say we need to do an environment, like a larger-scale environmental document, is there then an agreement that would pause, come back to council, and say, "We have to make a decision," or we continue to circulate?
I would imagine we'd probably have a conversation with the operator, to see if it's something they would wanna pursue based on that information, and if it is something that they wanted to pursue, then we'd come, we would come back with an option at that time, but I think historically, that cost has typically fallen on the event operator, but we wanna make sure that that would be part of the ongoing negotiations, and ensure that it is discussed with them as we move forward.
Okay, thank you. And then for the fact that the outer marker for Long Beach Airport is very close to this, we have any issues with planes flying overs, anyone check with the FAA? Did you guys have any issues in Montreal for, with airport, with being so close to an airport potentially?
That's a great question, we had no issues. We actually were in the flight path of the Toronto Airport, I have a video of the plane flying right over, not this particular show, but one that's even larger called Alumi, and there were zero issues.
Okay. It is a great question. All the way through the process, and then the FAA calls?
Oh, no, no, it's a great question, and so, yeah, no, but there, yeah, no issues.
Okay, great. With regard to SEQA for traffic, Jennifer, are we on VMT or LOS at this point?
VMT, so the traffic assessment will essentially assess whether or not we need to do a full VMT analysis.
Okay, and that would be level of service versus vehicle miles traveled, sorry. So, yeah, I think this is like one of those great things that is, you know, really amazing for, that if Huntington Beach can land it, are you guys totally tied to the exact spot you're at, or are you open to other spots that are feasible and work potentially?
Well, we love the site that's been identified, but if there's another site, I mean, we're open to looking at any site.
Sure.
This one is really beautiful, there's some great mature trees that could be incorporated into this show.
Right.
Without, you know, doing, I mean, without, you know, doing anything that, other than maybe lighting them up, but we're happy to work with you. Your staff, I have to say, has been amazing, Ashley and Molly to start, the city manager and city attorney have been really helpful, and Jennifer, I mean, it's just, it's been great all the way around, and so we're looking forward to continuing that dialogue, and if there's a better site, we're open to looking at it.
Okay, I mean, just in order to avoid the potential headaches of, I would say, putting fences around portions of our parkland, there's a large group of folks that have a measure that they passed a while ago, that was like, had issues with potentially leasing out parkland, and I think eight months gets a little bit towards the end of, towards the outer extreme of a short-term event, when you're in the, you know, majority of the year.
Right.
For potential privatization, I think it potentially sets some, not dangerous, but just concerning precedence for the use of our public spaces that our residents have fought very hard to maintain on a large-scale basis, and I think a weekend here, a week there is very different than six to eight months, and so it's just a concern that if, in order to avoid a protracted, selfishly, a protracted city council meeting, that we potentially look at a couple of other alternative sites, I think potentially the, across the street at the Equestrian Center, or on the south side of that, at Ellison Golden West, which is a kind of underutilized space that is flat, and does not have potential raptor habitat in it, and nesting, if you're looking at, you know, talking about using trees potentially, that in the Pacific Flyway with, there was a big concern about the senior center, which is, you know, across the street, with the same type of habitat restoration issues, we ended up in quite a long bit of litigation to resolve that, so, which gets me to the last question, which is Measure C. You know, at this point, you know, it's over 30 days of an event, does this become a, is that something that will be evaluated as part of the feasibility study, to see if we do trigger, does this become a lease under land use, if, even though it's an operation agreement, but we're putting a fence around something?
Yeah, we, so we have an attorney who's, Paul De La Sander's been assigned to it, he's been taking a look at it, he hasn't seen any red flags yet, but as this H-item and proposal develops, obviously, we're gonna be looking at it a lot more, so it is on our radar, and we will have.
We just definitely don't wanna, again, get down, get down the path, and then have a resident sue us under Measure C, to say that we're not following our rules, so, obviously, this is, again, this is a really, I think, cool international project, that I think could bring a lot of great things with a relatively low impact, you know, some of the noise spilt over, I'd be really interested to see how that kind of works, because we do have our noise ordinance here, that if we.
And we're committed to.
If you can hear a mouse squeak across the street, it's, you're in violation, so.
Yeah, well, yeah, we're committed to meeting whatever your ordinance is about leakage of sound, light, all of that, we will meet those.
Okay.
Yeah, because we know those are a concern.
I appreciate you guys being open to trying to make this work, and, you know, you've obviously worked in California before, and know some of the environmental regulations we have here, and we have, we're extra-special in Huntington Beach with our land use and our parks, so I do appreciate you staying so late, but, no, I'll be supportive of moving this forward to explore the feasibility.
Okay. Yeah, honestly, it's a lot of ditto of what else, what else has been said, I just did wanna, just, number one, say, I 100% want more cultural and arts events here in the city, so that's exciting, it looks like it would be beautiful, it looks like something I would love to attend with my family. All that being said, I appreciate that this is a feasibility study, you know, I think we're always looking for new ways to have economic development, and also, as I said, arts and culture in the city. I do have concerns about the long-term use piece, so I'm looking forward to hearing more about the environmental checklist, field study, and all of that, and also, I have a, I do have concerns about the environmental impact, but that will all be addressed with that. I do think that we, hopefully, will get more community feedback as well, I don't think everybody knew what this was, and hopefully, they'll understand more about that. And then, I guess, without repeating all the things that were said, I think the other thing that, and I guess it goes back to what was already said too, is like it's never been there, with the plastic over the grass, and the, I know you said that any irrigation and infrastructure would be repaired, it just, it just concerns me, and I appreciate that it would be repaired, but that length of period of time, you know, I just love our park, and I know that our people love our parks too, so we would definitely wanna make sure that that was all incorporated. And then finally, I would hope that we'd be able to see more details with regards to the financial aspects of everything as well, with regards to, I know you mentioned the parking, but any other, you know, contracts, or revenue sharing, things like that, just more specificity as we move forward, to make sure, I know that we talked about funds going to the library and things like that, but we really wanna make sure that everything is transparent, and also that it's an appropriate balance of use and revenue. I will be supporting the feasibility study, because I would like to have more information. Thank you.
Okay, I think we're ready to vote.
Wonderful, okay, let's start. Councilmember Mosier.
Aye.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKeon?
Yes.
Kalmick?
Aye.
Seven-zero, wonderful.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Meeting adjourned.